Thanks Owen. So my name is Paul Tagliferi. I am the Chair of the North Burrow Zoning Board of Appeals. It is now past 6:00 PM on July 25th, 2023. The open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law March 29th, 2023. All members of the North Borough Zoning Board of Appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the zoning board of appeals to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to North Borough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation. Unless such participation is required by law, this meeting will feature public comments. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Fran Baxtrin? Suzie Sizlikow?
Yeah.
Brad Blanchett?
Here.
Jeff Grabowski?
Here.
Jeff Leland?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Yeah.
Robert Federico?
Yeah.
Alright, so just some basic ground rules for presenters and or applicants. The Chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation or speak to the application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the Chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the Chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board or Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For items with public comments, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the Chair. Please note that part of your phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. If you are in by Zoom, please click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the Chair. The Chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed all, has a list of all the public commentators, Chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Okay, so we have three items on the agenda that will be continued. So first up is the continuation of the consideration of petition for David Cooley for a special permit to reconstruct a non-conforming structure destroyed by fire, a special permit for use in a groundwater protection overlay district, and site plan approval for a proposed five-unit, 4,600 square foot multifamily structure and associated site work on property located at 129 Maple Street, MAP 52, parcel 17, 1829 in the residential C zoning district and groundwater protection overlay district area two. So Lori, you got an email from the applicant who, I believe it was this week, asking for this case to be continued to our August meeting.
That is correct.
Okay, so for our August meeting, the plan will be, or the date is August 22nd. If considering the number of continuations we have on the agenda for today and the addition of two extra meetings, is everyone okay with having, starting next month's meetings at 6:00 PM as well? Okay, so is, do I have a motion? So we will not be taking public comment on any of the continuations here since none of the applicants are here. So if you do have public comment for anyone that is in the audience, for 129 Maple, for 78 West Main, and for 305, 309 Main Street, we will not be taking public comment tonight. You can do so by either contacting the Board or coming to our meeting in August. So for the, for the continuation of 129, do I have a motion to continue the public hearing to 6:00 PM on August 26th, 2023?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we continue the public hearing for 129 Maple Street to our August 22nd, 2023 meeting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Alright, so Fran made a motion and Brad seconded. Roll call vote. Fran, Fran Baxtrin?
Aye.
Brad Blanchett?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. So next up is the continuation of consideration for the petition of S A L 3, 305, 309 Main Street LLC for a special permit use, special permit for groundwater protection overlay district, and special permit with site plan approval for the operation of a drive-through food service at the existing structure of 305 and 309 Main Street, MAP 47, parcel 7 and 8 in the business east zoning district with groundwater protection overlay district area 3. So the same thing as the last case, we will not be taking any public comment at this time. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to 6:00 PM on August 22nd?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I move in 2023 meeting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, Fran made a motion, Brad seconded. Roll call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, so the continuation, next up on the agenda, continuation and consideration of the petition of 78 W LLC for dimensional variance for insufficient areas, special permit to expanding non-conforming structures, special permits for multifamily use in the downtown business district and groundwater protection overlay district areas 2 and 3, special permit to extend a use into a more restricted groundwater protection overlay district by no more than 50 feet, and special permit with site plan approval for a proposed multifamily expansion to an existing structure at 78 West Main Street, MAP 63, parcel 55. So similar to the last two, we'll be continuing this case. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to 6:00 PM on August 22nd?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Fran.
I move that we continue the public hearing for 78 West Main Street to our August 22nd, 2023 meeting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, Fran made a motion to continue. Brad seconded. Roll call vote. Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Alright. Okay, so now up is the continuation of the consideration of the petition of MBI North Borough LLC for a special permit to extend a non-conforming use and special permit with site plan approval to expand an existing trucking terminal by 12,218 square feet and 20 loading docks to construct a new 10,780 square foot accessory maintenance facility on the property located at Ranger Bartlett Street, MAP 67, parcel 7, in the industrial district. Lori, do we, do we want to take, or do sort of Jeff's statement now, or how do you?
What I would do is I would do it right before you close the public hearing, but just as explanation for the applicant, Jeff Grabowski was absent at the May meeting. However, he viewed all of the materials and he also viewed the video recording of the meeting. So that means that he is eligible to vote on this application. So it doesn't need to be unanimous vote of the four regular members of the ZBA. Jeff, the alternate is eligible to vote on this project. So Jeff, if you could read that statement at the end and then close the public hearing and then we'll discuss the decision.
Okay, cool. Owen, can you make me the host by any chance? I'm having an issue sort of make up, bringing people into the meeting. Or if you could bring in Peter Ellison for this meeting and move John Shade to the audience.
Should be all set.
Thank you. Hi, Peter, how's it going?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. How's everyone doing?
Doing good. Is it, will you be the only person attending the meeting tonight?
Yes, I believe so, yep.
Okay, great. So I guess we can start with just, if you want to just give us sort of an update on sort of the design plans, some of the back and forth you've had with town staff, fire chief, police chief, and everything else, and sort of present sort of the designs that were, were sent over.
Fair thing. So I guess to start, coming, thinking back to the last meeting we all had, there was pretty explicit direction from the Board that we need to incorporate some type of physical infrastructure improvement at this driveway that will restrict left-hand turns out of the site from trucks for, for, for full-size tractor trailers. So I'm going to share my screen. Please let me know if you all can see it once I do.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So since the last hearing, I've developed a concept for the layout of the driveway improvements, which you can see here today, and we've kind of been in coordination with, with Lori, the planning department, the police chief, the fire chief, and I believe potentially the DPW Director was on those emails as well. Essentially what we're proposing, you can see I put in the signage right onto the plan so you can see exactly what we're proposing for kind of larger, more clear site signage to direct trucks to turn east out of the site. The central island here is proposed with sort of a right angle, kind of directing cars and trucks slightly to the right. This island would be six feet wide. It would have nine-inch reveal, vertical granite curving on the outside, and then the center of it would be paved with a concrete finish. As you can see at the front of the island, there's a truck, there's a no trucks left lane sign. Across the driveway, there's a no left turn for trucks. Then at the nose of the median island, there's a second no left turn for trucks. And then, or to the right near the end of the driveway, there's a stop sign with a truck route arrow pointing to the right. This sign over to the left here where it says no trucks would be facing the west of the driveway, and it would be pointed towards trucks who do make a mistake and are coming from this direction so that they know they cannot turn into the site. And I can go through these different layouts, which models the different types of vehicles that would be coming and going from the site. So this first, this first drawing here shows a full-size tractor trailer taking a right turn, staying within the right-hand lane, turning right and heading east onto Bartlett Street, which is what we are trying to accomplish with this layout. It also shows that a passenger car can stay within this left turn lane and take a left onto Bartlett Street safely. This next layout shows what would happen if a tractor trailer tries to take a left-hand turn and ignore the one, two, three, four signs that we would install. As you can see, this truck is all the way over on the right side, so it's modeled as if it's trying to take the full use of the driveway width, and then also the full width of Bartlett Street, so it's actually pulling off the pavement on this side into the shoulder area. And even, even when the truck uses the full width of the pavement as shown here, it would conflict with the proposed median island. So most likely what would happen in that scenario is that the truck would either need to stop or it would hit, you know, the, the wheels of the truck would hit that median island and likely pop a tire, I would guess. This layout here is a left-hand turn into the site off of Bartlett Street. So as you can see, there's no conflicts with the layout of this median island and the curving along the outside. This layout shows what would happen if a truck tried to turn right into the site from Bartlett Street. As you can see, there's conflicts on both the median island and this exterior curving here. This would be a fire truck taking a left-hand turn, so North Borough's fire station is to the, is to the west of the driveway. So we wanted to make sure that there's adequate space for the fire chief and his largest truck to be able to turn left onto Bartlett. As well as this next layout shows the fire truck turning right from the west into the site. So essentially what we've been able to accomplish or through this concept is we can restrict tractor-trailer trucks from turning left. We can allow passenger cars to turn left. We don't lose any emergency access through this layout. And, and we've provided the additional signage, hopefully that, hopefully the Board agrees that this is distinct and clear enough to get the message across to all truck drivers to turn right. I guess before I go any further, I guess I would just send it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and see if you or the Board have any questions on these diagrams.
Okay, great. I guess what I would say first, Peter, is, you know, do appreciate you guys putting in the effort here and sort of modeling out and sort of, you know, coming up with this design. I think my, my personal opinion on this is that I think that this is definitely a step in the right direction for this site. It accomplishes some of the goals that we've been looking for for both your facility and the Amazon facility. And so I do appreciate sort of the effort and the work that your team has done here, that you come up with design that is reasonable, acceptable to trucking in addition to the emergency vehicles with the fire chief and everything like that. So I think I'll open it up for anyone on the Board, for anyone that has questions or comments about this new site. I think just for our own, you know, how this fits in. Lori, can you confirm, for this plan, right, obviously this is a proposed plan as part of the conditions. Do you know which condition this plan is identified with? Is it L?
Sure. Just bear with me a minute. So it is letter D on page five, condition Roman numeral four. Obtain approval from town staff, including the town engineer, fire chief, police chief, DPW Director and planning director for a plan depicting physical adjustments to the geometry of the driveway's intersection with Bartlett Street, so the tractor-trailer trucks are forced to interleave the driveway from, to the east. So then it goes on to talk about the configuration. It references this plan and also the signage.
Okay, and at this point, you know, there's been sort of positive feedback from the fire chief, the police chief, the DPW Director, yourself regarding this plan. I know that there's been some emails going back and forth, but is that the general sense of where things stand?
Yeah, I didn't get anything back from Scott Sharpton here about this, but Fred did review it. We discussed it yesterday. And he seemed to be okay with it. I did receive emails from the police chief and the fire chief saying that they were all set.
Okay, great. Alright, Suzie, it looks like your hand is up.
I thank you for that, the drawing. I really, first of all, I really appreciate the diagrams of the truck and showing the traffic and everything and how the trucks are flowing. I had a couple of questions. I wanted to know the size of the physical signs and whether or not the showing where the trucks, if they could, where, if you could go, could you go show the diagram again of the signs? I was just wondering if they were going to be, see how the arrows are on the road. Are they gonna, are you gonna have something on the road that says like no trucks, like printed on the road itself?
Oh, you mean like a pavement marking, like?
Yeah. I see, I see that there are things there now. Are they going to be removed or is there going to be something on the pavement as well? Or is it just the physical signs?
I don't have a problem with it if the Board would like that. In addition, you know, to me, the only thing with pavement markings is that they do fade away. So we were really focused on the, on the signage itself. We wanted to make sure that that, you know, standing alone, just the signage would be enough to get the point across. But if, if the Board has a preference to also incorporate pavement markings that say no trucks in this left turn lane, that, that's, I have no problem with that.
And then how big will the actual, the physical signs be?
Yeah, so these, these are all standard sign sizes. There's a, there's a manual, it's called the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, that, that tells us basically exactly how big they are. So that's kind of the manual that we go off of. If I had to guess, these signs here that are square would be roughly 30, 30 inches by 30 inches. And then I think this one would probably be 18 inches wide and 24 inches tall. But, you know, again, I think the nice thing about that condition that Lori and the Chair read is that those types of details are something that will certainly be ironed out and finalized with input from the town engineer, the DPW Director, the police chief, basically all, all the town departments.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, does anyone else on the Board have any other questions? Fran?
I just, to follow up on, one of the emails that we got had to do with the reoccurring training, and that is part of one of the conditions. I was wondering if that, I read through it, I didn't actually see it in the condition, but like the other one, it might just be worded where I didn't notice. But is it actually written in the condition, Lori?
Yes, I have that as a condition. Just bear with me till I, so I can find it.
I'll probably find it when.
Letter M, all heavy commercial truck drivers shall enter and exit the project site from the east. The applicant shall provide driver training and education during pre-shift meetings so that drivers are aware of the turn restriction, Bartlett Street restriction.
Thank you very much. No other questions?
Okay. Are there any other, Jeff Grabowski?
Yes, Peter, I was just wondering, what, what is on the, the right side of the driveway there? Is that a fence? Or, you know, how is it possible for drivers to, you know, veer into that area at all?
This, do you mean this dark line here?
Yes.
So the, the dark lines on this edge and on this edge were actually a, a comment and a suggestion from the police chief to not only provide that nine-inch reveal granite curb in the central island, but also on the edges. The reason for that is any tractor-trailers that are trying to access the site from the west that should not be driving that way, we want to restrict that movement with the, you know, with the granite curving. By creating these kind of hard edges along the edges of the road, that's kind of how we, that's how we set the boundaries and how we restrict the trucks from going outside of the road and then turning back in basically to, you know, this would really have to be a rogue truck driver, in my opinion, like these, these signs are pretty clear, but to try and, you know, avoid the signage, avoid the direction and still take a left, it's just not going to be possible with those hard edges that, that granite curving along the edge.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Thanks, Jeff.
I can clarify that condition D4. In the final sentence, I can add the language, the raised island and driveway radii shall be bordered by vertical granite curve with a minimum nine-inch reveal. Just so it's clear to everybody.
Okay, thanks Lori. Are there any other questions from Board members? Bob or Lori, do you guys have any other additional comments? And then we will take some public comment and feedback afterwards.
I, Mr. Chair, I have a question if I may.
Sure.
The, the modeling for the tractor-trailers is, that's assuming a 53-foot box. I do know occasionally that FedEx uses tandem trailer arrangements with shorter boxes. I was wondering if that, if those models were done as well.
Meaning two, two trailers together?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we did model that. I don't have a diagram for you, just because I thought it was such a rare occurrence, but essentially in order to make the right-hand turn for those trucks, they would have to take up a little bit of this left turn, left turn lane here. I think because the frequency of those trucks leaving the site is so low, it's relatively low, you know, risk. Essentially, they would just need to temporarily take up both lanes in order to take a right on the Bartlett, and, and with that arrangement, there's absolutely no way that they can take a left.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Lori, did you have any other additional comments or questions?
I do not.
Okay, this is still an open public meeting, so if you are listening in on this call, if you're listening in on Zoom, you can just press the raised hand icon on your thing, or if you are dialed in, you can dial *9 and it'll raise your hand. Alright, so I have a phone number ending in 376. If you can please unmute and state your name and address, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Manny Olp. I live at 96 Bartlett Street. And I, I, first I want to say I appreciate the consideration that FedEx has been making on this from the beginning about the residents' issues with the tractor-trailer trucks traversing our neighborhood. I, I see the, the changes that you're proposing, and one of the things is, is that it seems like it's going to be, you know, something that should you know, deter the drivers. But the problem's going to be is that what kind of enforcement is there going to be, right? I mean, for example, you make the comment that, you know, trucks, if trucks adhere to staying in the lane, they can't take the turn. But I think we've all seen and had experiences where 18-wheelers, when they take a turn, they very rarely take a turn right in without taking very, very wide turns, and they go into the adjacent lane. And we've all, in some cases, had to even back up to give them room if we're in the adjacent lane. So to me, it's, if they stay in the lane, it's going to be difficult, but I don't see truckers adhering to that. So, so I guess my question is, is that how do we know, know that this change will stop truckers from taking a wide turn and taking a right turn entrance into it? I didn't see that clearly shown as being prohibitive to the truckers if they did that. So the other thing was too, is that the, the, what kind of consequences do they, are you going to put some sort of camera up? I mean, for example, if you cross the borders, CBP has cameras that monitor access points and even snap pictures. So if you've got drivers that come in from the right, it should be pretty easy to think that that should trigger a camera where you get an image, and then you know exactly which truck and who the driver is, so that you can take, you know, actions to reprimand them for the action and prevent it in the future. I know that that's not, that's something you can do. And I know previously when we've mentioned in other meetings about, you know, trucker numbers and things like that, that you say, well, you don't know which way the truckers come, and they could be coming from different positions, so that didn't really mean anything. But a camera at the entrance that would catch people who don't adhere to these changes, I would think that's something that could be part of the requirement for this. And the other thing would be is that, as a compliance with this day and age, Amazon, everybody, they all use GPS. It's all in the NAV. It tells them where their deliveries are from point A to point B, and I'm assuming the same thing for FedEx trucks coming from one terminal to another. Is there a change that's going to be done to the GPS NAV system that's used to track and monitor trucks to make sure this change is delineated in their NAV systems? And of course, you know, since this is a shared access way with Amazon, is Amazon 100% on board with adhering to these too? So but the other thing would be is that if they do catch somebody, let's say you put a cam reference or someone reports a driver doing but the other thing would be is that if they do catch somebody, let's say you put a cam reference or someone reports a driver doing this, what consequences would the company be implementing for non-compliant drivers that continue to, you know, not adhere to the signage and the intent of what you're doing? And lastly, I'd like to ask the town of Northborough that, you know, you can see what uh FedEx is proposing to create uh in a hindrance. It isn't going to prohibit it, but it's a hindrance the truckers to get the message. You know, I, I believe in the past, we've widened the turn and made uh, you know, coming into Bartlett Street from Route twenty because the truckers were hitting the curbs and the poles and everything else there. And I would say, I don't think that's a good idea. I think, you know, we don't want truckers going down the road as we're trying to get FedEx to do here, then I don't know why we don't make it so the entrance from Route twenty on the Bartlett Street residential end be made compliant with the minimum requirement of law, but let's not accommodate it and make it easy for eighteen wheelers to go into Bartlett Street from Route twenty regardless of what direction they're coming from on Route twenty. So uh, those are, those are my points. Uh, I appreciate.
Thanks, Manny. Appreciate it. Um, so I guess just, just a couple of quick things on that. Um, Peter, um, you, you have spoken to Amazon um, and they have sort of given a general approval uh for this design. Is that, is that accurate? Is that a fair statement?
We, we, at this time, we do not have Amazon's express approval for this concept. Um, however, we did meet with Amazon. I believe Lori was on that call. I don't remember exactly. I believe there was town staff on that call. And they were, because they have the left-hand turn restrictions already built into their special permits, they're open to the idea of modifying it. Um, they have their own engineering department that would need to, you know, weigh in, provide review. Um, and I, again, I think that's why the, the condition of approval that um Lori has written and incorporated covers the board um and should make you feel comfortable because at the end of the day, we need to coordinate with Amazon and town staff is the one who makes the final call on whether it accomplishes the board's goals or not.
Okay, right. So that, the, the condition, um, the section uh four or D four, basically where the town planner, fire chief, police chief, uh town engineer are all sort of, you know, approving of whatever the final decision is, is going to be. So these are design concepts um that are being presented to us today. Um, you know, with the explicit goal to sort of prevent truck, traffic from entering and exit, which is its own separate condition. I believe it's condition M, right? So from an enforcement perspective, I guess, going into my next question, Bob, this is generally speaking, an easier way to, to enforce this, right? Like these, um, you know, the nine inch um curbing and stuff like that, these are physical impediments that we are doing or requiring as a condition to prevent left-hand turns, but from a, from an enforcement perspective, right? You know, you could sit at the entrance to the FedEx facility and if there is a truck that enters from the west or exits to the west, right, that is a um, a violation of the decision that we are discussing today.
If it's written into the decision that no left turn is allowed, period, okay?
Yep.
That is the basis with which you can start enforcements. Then you have to figure out what type of evidence is going to be required for an enforcement. Um, personally, I kind of like the camera idea. If somebody's willing to cough up the money for it and I'll just sit here at my desk and, you know, write fifty-dollar tickets, you know, but then again, anybody who thinks you, that a decision on a piece of paper is going to guarantee one hundred percent um, success rate, I'm going to say right now is a fool. Um, because you're dealing with hundreds of drivers. A lot of them, you know, I don't know how they get their license, to be honest with you. I've seen truck drivers all over the place. You know, but then again, there are some great ones. So, you know, it, you know, and it, and it's a fifty-dollar fine. You know, you got a half million dollar truck carrying a million dollars worth of, you know, good, goods. You know, what's fifty bucks if he gets caught? You know, but I think that, you know, making it physically difficult for a truck to get in. Um, you know, if, if, if those trucks tend to jump those nine inch curbs, um, you're doing some serious damage to those tires. And I know for a fact on a fire truck, a, a tire for a fire truck is two thousand dollars. Not counting the, so you know, if a, if a driver tries to take one of those odd turns and, and goes up on the curb and damages wheels and tires, um, that's serious dollars. So I, I, I think that number one is a deterrent and number two, just making it physically more difficult to make those turns um would help as well.
Thanks, Bob. I appreciate it. Okay, uh Rachel Armstrong. Uh, if you could just unmute, uh, state your full name and your address, please.
Rachel Armstrong, ten Hemlock Drive. Um, I have a, a couple of questions and forgive me if this was answered previously. The signage that you showed on the driveway, is that going to replace the current signage or is that going to be in addition? There are a lot of signs already there. So is the signage that you showed how it will look? Um, those, those will be the only signs there about the left turns? Or is that, are we adding that to the signs that are already there?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the idea would be that though, these signs that we're proposing would replace what's out there now. Um, the problem with, if you have too many signs, the problem is that people will start to overlook them because there's just too many for um a driver to process. So um, the, the signs that are out there today are, are a little bit small. Um, I actually think I have a picture so I can share that. So the signs that we would be proposing would be larger than this. The text would be larger than this and um, as you could see on, on these signs, it says specifically Amazon trucks, so we would want to be pulling that down and clarifying that it's all trucks need to turn right.
Okay, that's great. That, that's great. Um, so the other question I have is, I believe in a previous meeting, you had said that the twenty bays are, would not add traffic, that it's just to handle the traffic you already have. Is that correct? The.
Yeah, so uh, what we're, what we're permitting and what, what is in front of the board and what the board needs to vote on is the increase of twenty bays. Um, from what we have heard from the specific tenant of the building from FedEx Freight is that they don't anticipate the amount of trucks coming and going from the site increasing much. Um, but I do just want to caution the board that, that what we are proposing and what is in front of the board and needs to be voted on is the increase of, of twenty bays.
Okay, that is very concerning. Um, I apologize for the last minute email that I sent. And, and first of all, let me thank you, Peter, because the, the driveway design that you did is um, is much more than we've received from a lot of the other applicants. So I appreciate the work that you're putting into this. I am very concerned at the um potential increase of traffic there. That driveway is so dangerous and even if we have every single truck making a right-hand turn, it is still a safety hazard. I, I, today was just really scary to see what was going on in that driveway. So um, I appreciate the effort to keep the trucks um, to, you know, to do the, the turning directions that they're supposed to. But I'm very concerned about the increase in traffic and I'm wondering if there's a way to do a traffic study before and after and it's hard to do, hindsight is twenty-twenty, and I know FedEx is not the only tenant there. But if there's a way to do a traffic study before and after so that we can keep the traffic to certain levels. Um, you know, now that we have a new applicant, we have an opportunity to change some of the conditions, whether there's a way to monitor the traffic and have the applicant pay for those traffic studies. I, I think that we are at over max capacity for that driveway. Um, it's really scary to think that the kids are going to be back in school soon and we haven't solved this. So that's just another concern and question about that driveway.
Um, Ra- Rachel, do, do you have anything else?
Yes, the, the other um concern Manny brought it up, the intersection of Bartlett um and Route twenty. Um, that is um, is the other concern about um trucks driving on there. And I know Bob had said something about cameras. We've been asking for cameras at the, at that driveway for a while, but if we could get cameras at that intersection, it's also a way to catch trucks potentially um, you know, going uh, traveling uh east on that, um, you know, making the, the right from Route twenty onto Bartlett Street. So that was just another suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, um. So I, I guess just from um the signage piece of it, um, I mean, so like, I guess, Peter, like at a, at a minimum, what you presented will be sort of the minimum, like the, the base signs that are going to go up. You know, a sign on the left as you're exiting, a sign on the right, another sign right as you're, you're exiting. You know, a sign for trucks to see as they're coming in from the west, if they are coming in from the west. Um, you know, and, and I agree that, you know, having too many signs or too small of print uh makes it hard to see, especially at night. If there's, if that's the operation that's occurring. But I, I guess you want to just give another, just one last comment on the signs and like, I mean, the signs that you propose, from what I can tell, are bigger than what the, the signs that are there. Is that a fair statement?
That's true. Yep. And there's also only, right now, there's only signs at the very far right side of the driveway. So uh, it's not completely unreasonable for a truck driver to say, I didn't see it over there because I was turning left the whole way. Um, in this case, yes, I agree, this would be the base signage package. So if, if through working with town staff through the, you know, police chief, town engineer and fire department, there's a, there's a request to add an additional sign here. We're open to that, like adding signs is not an issue. I guess, you know, we are, we're, what we're proposing is two new signs on the left in that new median island and then two new signs on the right-hand side. Um, and all, all of which would basically be directing trucks, don't turn left, turn right.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so I still, I do not see any other uh hands up i- in the public. Um, are there any other further comments from the board or town staff? Comments or questions? Uh, Lori?
Um, and so I just wanted to call your attention because I'm not sure if you folks uh are going to notice it on your own in the draft decision. We did get an email from a gentleman uh who was pointing out um a particular plant that is invasive on the hill. So I did actually include that as a condition of approval. Letter R says the applicant shall eradicate invasive big leaf lupine from the subject property. So I, I just found to make sure that everybody saw that condition um and is okay with it. Before you close the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you very much, Lori. Um, okay, uh, are there any other comments or questions from the board or staff? All right. Um, so I think, Lori, is it at this time that we should have Jeff read the um statement? Assuming that the next step is to close the public hearing?
Yes, please.
I should say, Peter, do you have anything further to add um for this?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, uh, so uh Jeff, if you want to just.
Sure. Yep. All right. So I, Jeffrey Grabowski, alternate member of the zoning board of appeals, certify that I, I examined all evidence received at the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three session of the zoning board of appeals relative to the application of NBI Northborough LLC for property located at three hundred Bartlett Street, Northborough, Massachusetts for a special permit per, per zoning bylaw section seven oh five oh two oh one five B to extend a non-conforming use and special permit with site plan approval per zoning bylaw section seven oh three oh five oh A two to expand an existing trucking terminal by twelve thousand two hundred eighteen square feet and construct a new ten thousand seven hundred eighty square foot accessory maintenance facility. Said evidence includes a video recording of the May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three meeting that I missed. And I will submit a uh signed copy of that.
Okay. So uh, I guess at this time, um, if no one else has any other further comments or questions, is there a motion to uh close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to uh close the public hearing for three hundred Bartlett Street.
Thank you. Brad made a motion to close the public hearing. Uh, it was seconded by uh Jeff Grabowski. Uh, we will do a roll call vote. Uh, Brad?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
Uh, Fran?
Aye.
Uh, Suzie?
Aye.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Okay, thank you, Peter. Appreciate your time.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we have about twelve minutes, um, maybe ten minutes or so and so. We can hear the other cases. Um, do we want to talk about three hundred Bartlett or, or do you want it to um? The, is ten minutes enough time, Lori, to discuss the fifty-three G policy and technical review fee? Or do we need more time? Lori?
Whatever is your pleasure. Uh, you folks could uh could go forward and vote on the decision for three hundred Bartlett or we can shift into the fifty-three G. Uh, wha- whatever. Whatever you'd like to do.
Okay, um, why don't we just, why don't we handle the three hundred Bartlett Street? Being that it's fresh on everyone's mind. Um, I guess what I would say is I think that there is um, there has been progress made at this site. Um, I, I do like the new design to prevent the physical impediments to prevent truck traffic from turning left. Uh, the additional signage is bigger uh and more clear than what is currently there. Um, the current site does not have any restrictions whatsoever. So if the goal is to prevent truck traffic in front of the high school and in residential zones that we, I believe, all agree is a benefit to the town of Northborough. Um, I think this gets us in a better place than um, than what currently exists. Uh, I think doing nothing keeps us the situation status quo. Um, I believe the conditions that are there laid out um that we are, you know, are looking at sort of makes the situation better. Um, trucks can only enter in from the east. They cannot enter in from the west. Um, I don't see how it's possible to prevent a hundred percent of anything, no matter what we do. Um, and so um, I think that these conditions do a good job of sort of expressing our opinion, um, or at least my, my opinion on making this site better um, for the purposes of, of this part of town. So um, that's my general sense of things, but I'll open it up to anyone else on the board that um has any other comments. Uh, Fran?
Well, I mean, I have to agree with you, Paul. I think this is an opportunity to make a situation that is not as um well thought out as the one that's in front of us. So it's, it's a win for us to correct some of the Amazon issues by addressing them through the FedEx uh application. I am, I, I have to say, actually, I'm thrilled that the uh invasive species is going to be taken out because that, that really is a big deal. So the fact that it got, that that person brought it up and I heard some people kind of chuckled about it, but it really is a great thing that it was also added. That's all.
Thanks, Fran. Uh, Suzie?
Um, I'll start with Gary. He's a friend of mine. He works very hard over at Watson Park. I did, I had no idea he was gonna call. We've worked on a project with the kids in town. We worked on a winter sewing projects, um, actually. At Pactor and I believe Peaslee, um, growing plants over the winter, teaching the kids on how to. Do different, and it might have been one of these lupine plants, I'm not sure, but they, um. They just grew them during the COVID years and he planted them at Watson Park. Um, so I'm thrilled that we could do this. Um, I had no idea he was gonna call in, so I'm very excited that that was. Written into the decision, um, but I agree, I think. Um, the power that we have as a board to control this situation as much as we can is, um. Is, is, we can improve, what we can improve is, um, at hand and we're doing the best that we can. Um, and to say no, um, I think we would lose a lot of. Lose more than what's even seen right now. And I don't know if that makes sense, but, um. Um, I agree with everything you said, Paul. And I, and again, I'm thrilled about Gary's suggestion, so yes, thank you.
It's everyone's favorite condition, I think. Uh, Brad? Did your hand raised?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, yeah, I echo with, uh, what everyone's just been saying, and I really do. Uh, appreciate the effort that they put in to making this work as well, because like I mentioned last month, this is a hot topic and we have an opportunity to. Make improvements to a difficult situation, so. Um, I agree with all the conditions and, um, yeah. I'm on board.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other? Uh, Suzie, yep.
I did have, I, I had a couple of things that I forgot. Um, I got thrown by the, um, the lupine. I didn't know if we should, if, in the decision, if we should define heavy. Because I was remembering when we were talking about like the vans and when we were. The last meeting when we were talking about the no left-hand turns and the. Definition of like. A heavy vehicle, I didn't know if we should define that in the decision if Lori or Bob. If that's important or not. And then if we needed to say anywhere in here, I was looking over if we needed to say point blank that they're prohibited from entering. And exiting. From the west. If we said that point blank. Thinking of it.
Yes, so, so I think. I think section M, uh, which reads, all heavy commercial truck drivers shall enter and exit the project from the east. Meaning that they come out and they have to make a right, and then they can only enter. Coming in from sort of the Cedar Hill area. So that, that's, that's the specific condition.
Okay. That was it.
Right, so that, I think, and I think Bob might have confirmed it, but like, that's sort of the condition that. You know, I mean, not that he would, but if he were to stand sort of on the island. Um, and the truck was coming in from the west. That would be a violation, or if, sorry, if a commercial truck comes in from the west. That's a violation, and if it makes a left, driving over the curbs and stuff like that, that would also be a violation based on that condition. So.
Yeah, and then.
Generally speaking, correct?
Yeah, and then when Bob was talking about the camera, is that something that we could add in? Here, or is that something the town should pay for, or do you think that's something that? Like. The property owner? Like, could, should we? I don't know, I was just thinking when you were talking about like sitting at your desk, like. Or should we, like, should they have a camera to kind of watch over themselves? No? Or, I don't, I don't know.
Yes, Lori.
Uh, the one comment that I'm, um, a little bit concerned about is this. This application only pertains to FedEx. So this decision is for FedEx, it's not for Amazon. Uh, so that's. One concern that I have, if the, if the problem is Amazon. Uh, we only have the power to assign a condition to FedEx, not Amazon. I don't know if that's really fair, but. Just wanted to make that comment.
I guess the other comment I would say about just. Traffic lights, I believe that. Like, red light cameras are not allowed in Massachusetts at all, so. I don't know what the legality is of putting a traffic camera in. But I think that that's something for. Maybe the board selectmen to actually have to do something there, rather than this board for this specific. FedEx project, which is only one. Actor in sort of that driveway. So if the driveway, I guess. Put more succinctly, if that driveway is an issue. And the police chief has an issue and the, the traffic is a concern, and there are trucks backing up. And there's, you know, safety issues there. Um, that's a bigger concern than just this special permit. For this project. Uh, Fran, you, you have your hand up?
Uh, just, uh, because, um, when Lori was saying that while these conditions are on. The FedEx application, not the existing Amazon, the reality is, is the nine inch curbing is going to affect all traffic, so it's going to. It's still going to help deter the Amazon, it doesn't require them. Be the nineteen, the nine inch curbing, but. It's gonna be there anyway, so I think that is still a benefit overall to the traffic. That, um, is probably happening.
Right.
Brad, did your head up?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I agree, those, those curb cuts, believe me, I've, uh, I've. Messed up a tire or two in my day, and I can only imagine what these tires cost, like, I think Bob said a couple of grand for fire trucks, so. I think that what they're doing here, I think, is. Good enough, and I was just looking it up, so yeah, there's no red light cameras in Massachusetts. I was, not that I didn't believe you, Paul, but I was, I was kind of ridiculous, but anyhow, yeah.
Well, if you're ever driving through New York City, don't speed or drive through a red light.
Definitely not, they'll get you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions? With regards to this decision, um, and do people feel comfortable with making? A decision based on the draft, uh, decision that we have in front of us? Tonight? And if so, do I hear a motion? Or is there a motion? Brad, you look like you're ready to talk.
Mr. Chair, I move that we grant the special permit. Per section seven oh five. Dash zero two zero one five B to extend a nonconforming use and special permit with site plan approval. Per seven dash oh three dash oh five oh A two to expand an existing trucking terminal by twelve thousand two hundred eighteen square feet. And construct a new ten thousand seven hundred eighty square foot accessory maintenance facility. On the property located at three hundred Bartlett Street, subject to the findings of fact, one through fifteen. And the conditions of approval A through U on the draft decision.
Very well said, thank you, Fran. Is there a, a second?
Yes, I seconded, Mr. Chair, sorry, I was on mute.
Alright, so, uh, Fran made a motion, uh, and Brad seconded. Uh, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Suzie?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Okay. Thank you, thank you all, uh, and thank you Lori and Bob and. Fred for all of your hard work and effort on this project and. Chief Liver and. Uh, Chief Parretti as well, for, for all their input, it was, uh, greatly appreciated and it helped our board a lot, I think. Get us to where we are, so. Also, perfect timing, uh, we are now past the hour of seven PM. Um, so first up is to consider the petition for a dimensional variance. Submitted by John M. Shea Jr. For relief from the side setback requirement to allow replacement of an existing garage with a larger two-story garage. With storage on the property located at seven Washington Road, MAP ninety five. Parcel one oh five in the residential C zoning district and groundwater protection overlay district area three. Alright. So. John, I'm going to bring you in as a panelist. John, can you hear us?
I can hear you, I just unmuted, now I've got to get my. Video going for you. If I can.
John, are you expecting anyone else, um, to present with you, or is it just gonna be yourself today?
I have John Lupin sitting here with me also.
Okay, so there's no one else to bring into the meeting?
No.
Okay, great. Um, so I guess if you could just give us sort of a, a high level of what it is that you're looking for in the project that, um, you're looking to, to do.
We're looking for, uh, relief from the fifteen-foot setback, nine feet of relief. So that I can expand the garage without. Adding more coverage or. Putting more of a strain on the groundwater. You know, if I, I move it anywhere else further back. It's going to mean more area is covered with, um, impervious. Surfaces. There's landscaping and hardscaping, that's all developed and in place. And this is a, a garage that in my estimate is probably forty-five to fifty years old and. It is not in good, good shape, and I, I would not put a vehicle in it, and I want to.
Okay, so you're, you're proposing to replace an existing garage. Um, which would require you to have, um, some side setback relief. Um, is there impervious surface currently, um, sort of to the? Um, to the right of the garage today?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
It's, it's grass and landscaped area.
And so what is the total amount of relief that you are looking for?
Looking for nine feet of relief.
Okay. Lori? Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that there's actually two variances that he needs. Um, so the first variance is the, uh, side setback variance that he mentioned. But then there is also a requirement in our zoning by law that says. That if you have an accessory building. That is not to be used for residential purposes. It can be no more than one story in height. So Mr. Shea is interested in building a two-story garage, it's my understanding that the space above the garage. Will be used for storage purposes. Um, so he would also need relief from the one-story requirement.
Okay. Um, and so, I guess then, uh, for the second story, um, I'm just looking, do you, do we have any, um? Are you, are you able to sort of show like any drawings? Does anyone, can everyone, does everyone have sort of the sketches? Um, that Lori had sent out of the drawings and stuff and the mockups? Um, but it looks like the second story is just basically a, a pitched roof. Um, and that's just gonna be for storage, you said, for? Stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
Because the houses in the Northgate area have no storage. There, there is no space in here.
Yeah, okay, alright, so the request is for, uh, two variances. Um, one for the, um, the two-story versus a single-story section seven eight dash oh six oh three oh C three C. Uh, and then the second one is for the side setback relief, um, so Lori, it's, I think it's fifteen feet per side setback. So this will be. Um, six feet. From the lot line? If he's asking for nine feet, give or take?
Um, so he needs eight point one feet of relief. From the side setback requirement.
Okay. So, okay, so rounding up, give him nine feet. Okay. Um, are there any, um, are there any other, I guess, are any questions or comments, additional comments from staff? Um, for the applicant? No, uh, I'll also note that we did receive. Um, the, the letters, um, from budding and existing neighbors. Fifty pages of which, uh, of people writing, uh, in favor. As well. Uh, are there any questions or comments from? Uh, Fran, you have your hand up?
I just have a question for staff, if the garage was, I mean, I'm not opposed to it all, but if the garage was attached to the house. Would you need a variance to have it to two store? Or is it because it's a detached garage that it needs? To have a variance for the second.
If it was already attached to the house. It would probably not need a variance, since he's taking down an existing structure and building new. You know, the accessory structure is, um, does come under the, the two-story rule.
Okay, I think, I'm just curious, and I'm honest. Do I know what storage looks like? Uh, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Fran. Um, are there any other comments from, uh, the board?
Yeah.
Uh, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, just want to comment, question and a comment, um. I know over the past, we, we've seen many of these, um, types of applications come through, uh, like the applicant, applicants mentioned. Northgate lots are pretty small and a lot of them don't have garages, so. Uh, I think based on the feedback, um, that we've seen from residents and, and things like that, I, I think it's, it's a good fit. Uh, the question for the applicant, though, is what's the size of the garage currently there today? I know you, you're not using it. Um, it's in rough shape, and what's the, uh, square footage of the new garage? I'm just curious.
Current garage is sixteen by twenty-four. And the new one would, is going to be twenty-eight by twenty-eight. So it could be a two-car garage.
Yeah. Okay. Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Brad. I guess, uh, I would also mention. For this, uh, Jeff Grabowski is going to be a voting member, uh, for this case. As well. Uh, are there any other questions or comments from the board, uh, at this time? Okay, uh, so this is a public meeting, um, if you are in attendance for this meeting. Um, if you are on Zoom, if you could just please click the raise hand. Uh, icon, or if you have dialed in, if you can please select star nine. Okay, um, I don't see any hands raised this time, but John, do you have a, you have your hand raised? Do you have an additional comments?
No, no, sorry.
Okay. Okay, great. Unless, are there any other additional comments from the board or town staff at this time? I don't see any other. Um, hands raised, uh, Suzie, sorry.
Um, I, I live in the Northgate community, and I will say, it's, it's not unusual to see garages built. Um, around. An next-door neighbor has one, you know, it's like. You, you might see me as an applicant someday, it's my husband. They have a garage, he talks about it all the time, I'm like, wow. He's like, well, I do know someone on zoning, I'm like, oh, whatever, but, um, it, it's not unusual, we don't have a, we don't have storage here. So I will attest to that, but. That's all.
I don't have any other questions or comments, uh, does anyone else from the board have any other questions or comments or town staff, uh, for the applicant at this particular time? Nope. Okay. If there are no other additional comments. I can entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for seven Washington Road.
No second.
Uh, okay, uh, Brad made a motion to close the public hearing. Uh, and Fran seconded the motion, uh, this will be a roll call vote, uh, Brad?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Uh, Suzie?
Aye.
Uh, and Jeff Grabowski?
Aye.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Okay, uh, thank you, John, very much, uh, we closed the public hearing, uh, so we'll have a decision, uh, shortly after we listen to the other meeting. So thank you very much. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, so next up is to consider the, sorry, to consider a petition for a dimensional variance submitted by Yao Zhang for relief from a side setback requirement to allow construction of a proposed carport on the property located at eighty-one Maple Lane, map sixty-five parcel forty-four in the residential C zoning district in groundwater protection overlay district area two. Yao Zhang, I made you a panelist. If you can please unmute.
Okay, now.
Hi, how are you, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Great, okay. So eighty-one Maple Lane, if you wanna just give us just a sort of an overview of what it is that you're looking for with your application tonight.
Yes, I think of my builder, Jerry.
Okay.
Two, and he is the one that designed.
Okay.
He probably knows more.
Okay, I'm gonna bring Jerry in as a panelist now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Jerry, you are now a panelist on the, on the Zoom. If you could just unmute. Jerry, how are you? Can you hear us? If you could just unmute your
About now.
Yep, we can hear you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I guess if you wanna just give us sort of an overview of what it is that you're, the the project you're looking for, and what it is you're looking for from the zoning board of appeals.
Yes, it's a twelve by twenty-two carport that is designed to hold nine solar panels on the roof. And the relief is ten foot six in the sideline.
Uh, okay. So you're just thinking just a dimensional variance from the side yard of, sorry, how much was that relief again?
Ten foot six.
Ten point six feet?
Yes, ten point five feet.
Okay. So I think the the plans have shown for the carport. So it looks like there is currently a shed
Correct.
That is sitting adjacent. So will the shed still exist with the new plans?
Yes.
Okay, and so how big is the the proposed carport?
It's twelve by twenty-two.
Is there an existing, so what is the current surface of the area around the shed and the carport? And then what will be the proposed surfacing there? Will it be asphalt or?
No, it'll be just three-quarter stone, probably. Some stone, probably three-quarter, maybe smaller.
Okay, so in that, is that what's currently there?
Yes.
Okay, so that whole area where the shed is, sort of the, you know, if I'm looking at an aerial map, you know, in front of the shed, to the right of the shed, left of the shed, is currently all three-quarters inch stone. So that surface area will not be changing, and it's just the structure of the the carport, which is looking for say, ten point five feet of relief from the side yard setback.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any question or are there any comments from town staff with regards to this project?
So I just have one concern, and that is that the the plan, the petition plan that was submitted with this application is showing that the carport is gonna be three point four feet from the property line. So that would mean that the variance is eleven point six feet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I just wanted to, so is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
Are you proposing to to put it further away than the plan that you submitted?
Uh, you know, I have my my preliminary plot plan that I'm looking at. And I haven't pulled up the actual engineered one that we had cornerstone do. And if you're looking at the cornerstone one, then that's the one that's correct.
Okay, yes, I was looking at the cornerstone. That is what I put in the decision, just to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess just looking at the cornerstone engineering map dated June fifteenth to confirm Lori's point, it's three point four feet from the the lot line. So it's eleven point five feet-ish of relief.
Yes. That's good.
Four and six, eleven point six. Okay, are there any Fran, you have your hand raised?
Very much. I'm just curious. Is the reason for the carport being structured, being put there more to do with the solar panels than having your car under a covering that you still have to walk a pretty good distance to your house?
I would say fifty-fifty. Yeah, you could talk to that if you wish. The solar panels were a big determining factor, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, can I say? Yeah, I I I had a current solar panel on my roof. But because we have a lot of trees, it's not as productive. So that's a little sunny spot. And so I think I can do a carport and also solar panel together. So that's, that's why I think it make more sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other, I guess for this case, Jeff Leland will be the voting member, if that's, if that's okay for this case. So I'll just say that before we close it. But are there any other comments or questions from the board at this particular time?
Since I'm voting, I'll make one comment. I did drive by, and it is that location in the lot is the, you know, most sunny spot, so I can understand why, given the topography of that lot, that spot would be the place to put the carport. So it doesn't make sense very much to the to the right or the left of that. So it's kind of fit right in that spot.
Okay, great, thanks, Jeff. All right, so this is a public hearing. If there are members of the public who wish to make a comment, please click the raise hand icon on your Zoom, or if you are dialed in, please press star nine. I do not see anyone's hands up at this time in the attendees. Are there any other final questions or comments from the applicant? Jerry or Yao, if you guys have any other comments? Otherwise, are there any other comments, questions from the board or town staff? All right, I don't see anyone. Okay, I think, I guess at this time, I'll extend a motion to close the public hearing.
So Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for eighty-one Maple Lane.
I'll second that.
Sorry, Fran.
Got it.
It's okay.
I got it.
So Brad made a motion, and it was seconded by Jeff. This will be a roll call vote. Brad?
Aye.
Jeff Leland?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Susie?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm an I as well. All right. Thank you very much. We'll have a decision rendered shortly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too, thanks.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay. Why don't we just start with eighty-one Maple Lane, since it's the one we just heard? I guess my general comments is, are, is, are, I'm fine with granting the the variance for the relief. I think, you know, the carport idea, the fact that it's not adding to any impervious surface. You know, it's gonna be useful, used for sort of green energy in terms of the solar panels, I think is also a benefit as well. And so I don't, I think that just even the shape of the lot where it's very narrow at at certain points makes it very difficult to put this carport anywhere else inside of sort of the buildable zone of the lot. So I don't have any concerns or issues with this variance, but is anyone else? Jeff Leland?
Yeah, I'll just add to my prior comment, and that I forgot to mention it earlier. But as you first come into the driveway to the left just before where the shed is and the carport's gonna be, there's all kinds of wildflowers and bushes and other, looks like it's been plantings that have been put up there. So it really is a very green lot in every other spot. And so this will just allow that to remain the way it is.
Thanks, Jeff. Are there any other comments from board members? Nope. Town staff at all? Yes, not really. All right, Jeff Leland?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to grant the applicant's request for a variance for eleven point six feet relief of the side setback requirement specified in the zoning bylaw, section seven oh six oh three oh, table two, to allow construction of a proposed carport on the property located at eighty-one Maple Lane, subject to findings of facts one through eight.
Second.
All right, Jeff Leland made a motion, and it was seconded by Fran. This will be a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Susie?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, seven Washington Road. So this application is looking for two variances. One for the nine feet of relief, where fifteen feet is required. In addition to the variance for a two-story garage that will be used for storage. So I guess my general thought on this is, you know, these lots in Northgate are not very sizable. I think that this project is very reasonable in asking for some, for the lot, side lot relief. I don't believe the second-story variance is an issue, in my opinion, because it's, you know, sort of the pitched roof area. But I'll open it up to anyone else from the board for any additional comments. Brad, sorry.
Yeah, no, I agree a hundred percent. Well, like, I guess this is fairly common. Susie mentioned it as well. And the fact that the roof is slanted, I don't think there's to be used for anything else besides the storage. So I have no objections whatsoever with granting this, these variances.
Okay, Fran?
I just wanna make sure that we give the proper relief, because I always get confused when we're talking, are you going eight feet into the fifteen feet? Or are you leaving, you know, so the way it's written in the draft, it says seeking eight point one feet of relief. But would we really be rounding it up to nine? And it's like, it just confuses me sometimes as to what that means from the property line versus the project.
So it's fifteen minus the, from the side of the wall to the thing, right? So if it's nine feet, that means that there will be six feet from the side of the wall to the lot line, right?
Okay, so then
That's how I'm interpreting it as well, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. So he, you know, the bylaw is you need to be fifteen feet off the side. So if you're granting, you know, nine feet of relief, that means that he has six feet between where the wall will be and the lot line.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's what the intention was, because he did write nine feet of relief from the fifteen foot. Okay, thank you.
Right, and so I, the way I'm reading sort of this plan lot showing, drawing here, is that it will be six point nine feet from the lot line to the side of the wall where the garage will be. So if we're granting nine feet, that means that he has an extra point nine of buffer. So that he doesn't come back in front of us and ask for an extra six inches or something. Is that? Am I thinking about that correctly, Lori? Just wanna make sure I'm saying.
Yes, you do. So you would be giving them a few inches wiggle room.
Yeah. Which I think, I think for me, six feet on the side is a good enough distance. Does anyone else have any other comments? Susie?
I'll just reiterate that there, there, we really don't have a lot of storage in these houses. I'm one of the luckier ones, just because I don't have a cape. And a former, former owner had built a second story years ago on our ranch house. So, but the garages have been popping up over the years on different houses. So it won't be out of the ordinary to see another garage. And I did drive by, and it would be a nice addition to his home. So I'm in favor. And he did have his abutters in favor of it as well, which I think is also a plus.
Okay, so I guess we you so he's looking for eight point one feet. I mean, I think we usually try to give just a little bit of a buffer so that he doesn't have to come back in front of us if we are all in agreement. So I guess whoever does make a motion, should we change it to nine feet for this? Does anyone disagree with that?
I would be more comfortable with the nine feet, because that was originally what he had asked for before the the drawings.
Okay. Okay, are there any other comments from the board at this time? All right, see shaking hands, no. Do I hear a motion for seven Washington Road?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve two variances for seven Washington Road. One for nine feet of relief of the side setback requirement specified by the zoning bylaw. Section seven zero six, seven dash zero six dash zero three zero, table two. And the one-story limitation for an accessory structure for a non-residential use specified in zoning bylaw. Section seven dash zero six dash zero three zero C to allow the construction of a two-bay, two-story garage with storage on the property at Seventon Washington Road. And also include the nine findings of fact in the draft decision.
Okay.
Second.
Brad's, Brad has made a motion. Brad's, uh, Brad has made a motion and Fran has seconded. Uh, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Brad?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Uh, Jeff?
Aye.
Uh, Suzie?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Okay, great. Thank you everyone. Um, alright. Um, alright, so just, uh, turning to all the new business. Um, Lori, do you want to just give an update on the, um, draft chapter fifty-three G policy, um, and then the technical review fee?
So as you know, uh, unfortunately Fred Littfield has decide, decided to retire. And what that means is that the town engineer position is going to merge with the assistant DPW director position. And those interviews are currently underway. Um, so that also means that we are going to have less of that individual's time. So when we were coming up with the job description for the assistant DPW director, um, we discussed the fact that we would now have to go to outside consultants for some of the work, uh, that was typically done by the town engineer. So particularly having to do with, uh, larger scale projects. Um, and also inspections. So it would be reviews and inspections of, uh, the work, uh, for those large-scale projects. Um, so that means that we're going to have to adopt a fee. Uh, so under this, uh, regulation, chapter Hamas general law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G, municipalities who adopt a regulation are allowed to ask for a technical review fee upfront. Uh, receive that technical review fee at the time of submission of the application. Create a separate account for the project. And then, uh, if we are to run low on monies, we can ask the applicant to replenish the fee. And if we end up having extra money left over, uh, then we would just send the balance of the money back to the applicant. Um, so there is specific language in the regulation, uh, in the mass general law that has to be incorporated into the regulation. Um, and so the, uh, the general format of the regulation complies with that mass general law. Um, the planning board does already have a regulation, um, which is incorporated into the planning board rules and regulations. So some of this language is coming out, uh, from the regulation that already exists. Um, but I'm interested in hearing, in order to adopt this regulation, we actually have to hold a public hearing. Um, so I just wanted to provide you folks with the draft and kind of, uh, briefly discuss, uh, potential fees and maybe increasing some of your other fees. Um, with the intent of scheduling a public hearing and then, uh, adopting the regulation and the modification to the fee schedule after the public hearing is closed. So does anybody have any comments that they would like to share, suggested changes on the regulation?
Uh, so I guess just my first question, um, and it's probably just about the, the process of if we adopt this. Um, how does sort of like that decision tree work? In terms of like, when are we pulling in sort of the technical review? Is that something that, I mean, I know that section two has the consultant, is that just like a separate fee? Can you kind of just describe how that, or is it staff that determines when we, when we bring in sort of the, the technical review aspect of this?
Yeah, so generally, um, it's kind of, uh, us, in the past, uh, it's been something that we have discussed amongst ourselves. Um, so when the assistant DPW director is hired, I'm going to admit, some of the, the folks who are interviewing for that position are not civil engineers. Um, so it all depends on the qualifications of the person that is actually sitting in that position. Whether they feel comfortable doing the reviews themselves, whether they have the time to do the reviews, or whether they think it should be farmed out. So it's, it's kind of hard for me to, to say at this point because that individual hasn't been identified yet. Um, so it would, it would be to be determined, I guess is the, the best way to say it. And as far as hiring the consultants, the way that I would envision it, um, kind of the smoothest, uh, it, my best case scenario is that we have one consultant, one engineering consultant that everybody agrees on. Um, instead of having an engineering consultant for the ZBA and then a different one for the planning board and a different one from the conservation commission. That's going to be really complicated, uh, to administer. So I'm hopeful, um, that we can have some agreements amongst the boards on a particular consultant, but we're not to that point yet. Uh, at this point, just interested in, in putting forward the regulations.
Okay. Um, Brad, I think you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, no, uh, that was one of my questions, Lori, is, I, I do like what you said about the continuity of, uh, one consultant for all three boards. Uh, I think that makes the most sense. Um, how would we determine, is it an interview process? Would we have to like go out to like an RFP to choose this consultant? Like, how does that process work?
You know, it's something that we can talk about. I've done it a couple of different ways. Um, I have done the, the formal RFP process. So what we have done is we put a request for proposals out on the street. Um, we may be interested in targeting certain engineers and asking them to submit proposals. Um, and then there's like a formal ranking process. There's usually, you check references and you check, um, of course, uh, an interview and then you vote on the, uh, engineer that you folks like best. Um, now, engineers are considered exempt from, uh, procurement. So they can be hired without going through that, that very, uh, you know, detailed and lengthy process.
Yeah.
So I could also, you know, solicit quotes from three different firms instead of putting it out on the street and get three different quotes because they're, right now, the, the amount of work, um, that's is, exists for, you know, large-scale projects. We don't get a lot of large-scale projects. So we might only have a couple, couple of applications that they would handle a year. So it isn't a, a big money item. But, uh, what, what are your thoughts? What, what process would you feel most comfortable with?
Me personally, I have no clue. That's why I want to know. No one's going to lean on you, uh, lean on your, uh, on your knowledge and expertise.
I will admit that I have had a, a very good working relationship with a particular engineering firm uh, that spanned about eight years. And I have been through a lot of engineering consultants. And, uh, this particular team I, I really like. Um, so I am interested in soliciting a quote from them. Uh, they, they really do top-notch work. They're very responsive. Um, so I do have somebody in mind. Um, but of course, you know, if you want options, then I'd be happy to provide you with options.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I do RFPs in, in my line of work and I know they can take a long time. It's all, it's a big time suck. Um, so probably want to get th- this person in as soon as possible. Um, so any way to kind of speed up that process. And, uh, as far as like the fee schedule, I like what you put together as far as one for residential versus one for commercial. Um, so that's, that's my other piece of feedback. Uh, my last question for you Lori, so now that Fred's gone, we, we're in this, uh, limbo stage, what are we doing now as far as, um, having a, we don't have an engineer, but how are we backfilling that until someone comes in?
So, uh, Fred has agreed to stay on, uh, temporarily. So right now he's agreed to work two to three days a week and that's spread between DPW and, um, us.
Okay.
So, uh, he was in the office briefly yesterday. Um, you know, he prefers not to attend, uh, evening meetings if at all possible. Um, and he, he comes in when he wants to come in. Uh, so he's, he's told me not to expect to see him before nine thirty. So, uh, we're lucky that he's agreed to, to stay on at least for a while. And that will give us the time to adopt these regulations, put the fee schedules in place and, um, hire an engineer.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh, Suzie, I think you had your hand up.
Um, so is this a, a normal thing, this change that we're making in Northborough of not having an in-house engineer and having the physician kind of merged into the assistant DPW? And I didn't know who like had made the decision or how it came about. And, um, I was also wondering, should we, are we n- not going to depend then? Should we just kind of consider not to depend on that unless it's like something having to do with the, the lower level kind of questions then? And just kind of think that always in our head that we're depending on an outside engineer then?
So, you know, there, it's kind of split. There are many communities that have ten, town engineers and there are many communities that don't have town engineers. Um, you know, I've, I've worked for municipalities for about twenty-three years now. And Northborough was the first community that I've worked in that had a town engineer. So I love the position, you know, in a perfect world, I would love to see that position build. It's, uh, been tremendous. You know, the communication, uh, has never been as good as it is now because typically when you have a consulting engineer, you, uh, contact the engineer when you have something that they can build to. So there isn't the, it, it isn't going to have the same level of interaction as we currently have.
Right.
However, um, the decision to merge the positions was definitely way above my pay grade. So, um, you know, that it isn't something that they asked my advice. It's, it was, this is what's happening and this is, this is how we're going to deal with it. Um, so I am hopeful that the, the person who takes that position will be an engineer. And so I will still have the ability to have that excellent communication with an engineer so that they can handle the, the small projects that, uh, are the vast majority of the projects that we deal with here at the ZBA, um, and also the medium-scale projects. So then it'll just be the big projects that go out, uh, to the consulting engineer. Um, but it's, it's kind of too early to say at this point. And like I said, it really does depend on whether that person has the engineering skill set or not.
And that I had a couple, uh, just some like of the nitty-gritty. Do you want us in the public hearing to set the dollar amounts ourselves as well? And when were you thinking of us having the public hearing? And should it be separate? Because I know August is going to be a doozy timing, like the length of the meeting, but I don't know where you are, how, where they are in the interview process. If we should have a separate, I don't know if we should have a separate hearing or if it can be put off until September. Like I, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, so, um, I did propose fees. So if you look at the email, um, what I'm proposing is that now we put the advertising fee obligation on applicants. That's what every town I've ever worked in has done. That is typical. It's not typical that taxpayers are paying for advertising.
Yeah.
Um, so I would like to shift that burden. And then of course, uh, a hundred and fifty dollars for residential applications, uh, for single families, all other cases, I'm recommending to increase the fee to three hundred dollars. So that's a doubling of the fee, um, for both single-family applicants and all other cases. So right now, single-family, the fee is seventy-five dollars. All other cases, the fee is three hundred dollars. And then I'm recommending that you adopt a site plan review filing fee that is, um, identical to the planning board's site plan review filing fee. So of course I haven't had this discussion with the planning board yet. Um, we're going to be having that discussion at next Tuesday's planning board meeting. So whatever that is, um, I would like it to be consistent between the two boards. So right now we only have the five hundred dollars plus five cents per square foot of building area. Uh, the fee does not distinguish between residential, commercial and industrial projects. It's just all the same. And then there is no fee on projects, additional fee for projects that just deal with parking lots and they don't involve a building. So these fees are consistent with our neighbors. Uh, so I gave you some examples of what our neighbors are charging. Um, as far as whether this should be a separate meeting or I, I do not suggest uh, that we put this on our August meeting date because we already have five public hearings. So that's probably enough for that night. Um, so my suggestion is either we wait until the September meeting, which might be a little bit long, or, uh, we go forward with a, a special meeting. Oh, and my suggestion for the technical review fee is six thousand five hundred dollars. So it might be a little high for certain cases, but it might be a little low for other cases. So I was trying to pick a number that was kind of reasonable.
Regardless of, just, um, I guess regardless of whatever the fee is, if it's a larger fee, that requires a bigger fee, everything will be paid by, yeah. The sixty-five hundred is just basically a deposit.
Correct. So if the six thousand five hundred isn't enough, so we would go out to our engineering consultants. They would provide us with a cost estimate. So if the cost estimate says that we're going to need more than six thousand five hundred, then we just ask them for more money. So we give them a copy of the cost estimate and then they give us a check for that amount.
Okay. Uh, I guess just, um, with regards to the, the process. So are we, for the public hearing, is this both for the fifty-three G like, and the technical review fee and all the other fees? So it's one meeting for public input for all of those fees?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Um, and then, okay. Uh, does anyone else have any other, um, questions? Or comments? I mean, I guess my general sense is, um, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have an in-house town engineer anymore. Um, I'm assuming the decision was from, you know, budgetary in nature. For why we're sort of combining there. Um, so I think, you know, we really have to have sort of this technical review fee and all these other fees implemented because of that. You know, the, the single fees, the advertising fee, single family, all the case filing fees, site plan. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I, I don't have any issues with trying to get us up to speed with what other towns are. That's just my general, my thoughts there. Uh, I think in terms of timing though, um, I mean, I would say that I definitely agree that we should probably have a separate meeting for the public input for this, for this fee. Um, considering. Um, considering sort of some of the case loads that we have coming up, I mean, who knows what August and September are gonna be. Um, but I think given, you know, the sort of the clock ticking on sort of Fred's. Uh, involvement with stuff, um, we should probably do this sooner rather than later, but that's just my general thought. Uh, Fran.
Since, um, we're gonna try to be in concert with the planning. What if we did, might meet with the planning board, public here and then, um. Get it all done in time.
Right, I think you, I think you were cutting out a little bit, were you, uh, was your suggestion, uh, for a combined zoning board and planning board meeting for the public hearing?
Yeah.
So I guess, cause, because I guess the planning board has to adopt the same sort of fees and. Technical review, is that?
Right, I mean, we're gonna try to have the same fees, I mean, it's really whoever the, um. The authority is, you know, is it a zoning board, your special permit in front of a zoning board versus the planning board, it's not gonna matter from a fee standpoint. So why wouldn't we just? Um, do it all at once, if anybody has issue with it, it's not gonna be an issue with it because the zoning board or planning board is gonna be issue with the fee. I would think. Just as a suggestion.
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's a great suggestion because I mean, I, I think just at a high level. Whatever the fees are, it should be the same for planning board in the ZBA, right, so like. I mean, if someone wants to make it fifty-five dollars instead of fifty, okay, whatever, but like. It should be the same, so why not just combine and have the same meeting for the public hearing, I guess, Laurie, is that possible?
Yeah, I think that that's possible, um. They do not have to adopt the regulations because they already have regulations in force. Uh, but certainly, so that would, that would be just you folks. Uh, you're the only ones that would have to adopt that. Um, but the fees. Certainly, they have fees that you will not have, so they have far, a far more complicated. Fee schedule. Uh, than, than you folk have. Um. So there would be. Conversation above and beyond what concerns you. If that's okay.
Okay. Um. And so you, you're gonna have that conversation with the planning board, so that, so then I guess, like, what was the timing in terms of the public hearing? Like it has to be two weeks?
It has to be at least three weeks from today, so. What I can do is, uh, I can, I can talk to Carrie and see what she thinks about having a joint public hearing. Uh, at their September fifth meeting. Uh, and if she would rather not do that. Then another possible date for the public hearing is August twenty-ninth. If folks are gonna be in town, I, I don't. Could you let me know your availability for those two dates? If you happen to know.
What was the second date, September fifth, and what was the other one, August twenty-nine?
And I guess the expectation is that they will both be over. Zoom as well.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. I don't have an issue with those dates, so. But I don't know, but we can, I guess we, we can figure that out, um, over email as well, people don't have a. But, okay, uh, does anyone else have any other questions? Um, with that, with regards to the, the fees and stuff? Um. Alright, so I guess just moving on, um, so the consideration for the minutes of the May twenty-third, uh, meeting.
Well, there were some of the longer minutes that we've had, but I didn't see anything glaring.
Um. Yep. Does anyone have any issues with, uh, the minutes, um, from the? May twenty-third. Draft.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I move that we accept the minutes, uh, from the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting as submitted.
Second.
Okay, uh, Fran made a motion to accept the minutes, Brad seconded. Um, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Fran.
Aye.
Brad.
Aye.
Suzie.
Aye.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. I think both Jess were missing on that meeting as well, so. Um, we'll just. Whatever, um, I think, so. There was a, a suggestion to have a, a ZBA email address. Laurie, do you know if that has been set up? Basically a generic ZBA email address that people can sort of, um, utilize as opposed to. Sending them directly to your inbox.
I'll have to check on the status of that.
Okay, but I think, um, there was a suggestion, since other boards have. Sort of a general inbox, like the ZBA also have a general inbox for. Emails from public or whoever, so, um, I guess if we could just get that email address so that. Uh, people have a place to sort of send their. Uh, public comments, um. Are there any other, is there any other business, um? That anyone has any updates in other meetings? Master plan, implementation meetings or? Concerts.
Well, I can tell you that the downtown, uh, strategy report is, uh, being put together right now. We're hoping to get a draft in the next couple of weeks. Uh, which will be reviewed at a future MPIC meeting. And then there'll be a joint presentation, um, by, in front of the, the board of selectmen and the MPIC. So we expect that sometime in September, maybe early October.
Okay, great. But I guess if we have a meeting that is not. Um. Active, uh, maybe we can just get sort of a quick. Presentation on that or something, that would be useful, I think for me. Uh. Alright, does anyone else, uh, Suzie?
Our next concert's in the park, I'll just, I'm gonna do a quick plug, cause that's my other committee. It's August sixth, we have the squeeze box stompers and August twentieth, Billy and the Jets. So come on down, they've been great this summer. So.
Alright.
We seem to have sunshine on those days, I just have to say. So, you know, the one days we seem to have sunshine in North Row, so come on down to Ellsworth Park, five PM.
Awesome, thank you, uh, does anyone else have anything, uh? Else? Nope. Alright. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair likes to make a motion to, uh, close, uh, the ZBA meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-fifth.
Great.
I'll second the motion.
Alright, Brad made a motion, Fran seconded, roll call vote, Brad.
Aye.
Fran.
Aye.
Suzie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Alright, great. Bye, everyone.
Everybody.
Hey, how's it going, everybody, thank you.